Opposed or extensions? Okay, hearing none. We have both minutes approved. Communications. Does anybody have any communications? If not, anything else for the clerk's report? If not, we'll move on. Next would be recognition of groups and individual visitors. We have an individual visitor here tonight and to talk to us about the Belize trip. Dan Braden, you want to go ahead and fill us in on what you're up to?
Yeah, I'm proposing to take a trip, a group of students, up to 21 of them, to Belize next April vacation during 2016. We've taken 16 students in 2012 and 21 students in 2014. Brought them all home safely and sound. Had a great opportunity to study tropical ecology, environmental conservation issues, and the overall cultural and history of the country. So I'm passing around this letter with my background and the background of our guide who we use in the country along with a proposed agenda which remains pretty much unchanged from the last couple of times that we've gone on this program. It involves quite a bit of academic work ahead of time. We have to participate in three two-hour evening sessions, which they have multiple hours of homework to prepare. So it is entirely, or it's academic in nature. I definitely emphasize that to students right off the bat. And I expect them to learn a lot about all aspects of the country. Mostly focused on the biology and environmental studies aspects of it, but really everything that we can sink our teeth into and dig into and try to learn from. So I've also provided on the back of the white piece of paper just some quotes from students, reflections at the end of their experience in 2014.
I know it's early on, Dan, but do you have, do you think it's going to be fully enrolled? Do you already have students kind of?
I hope so, yeah. Way back in September, I had an initial meeting to gauge interest. And I had more than 40 students show up for that. And I've had a core group of people, I think, who'd be excellent participants checking in to see, like, are we on track? Is it still to go? Because there are a lot of opportunities for traveling to school and actually growing them. I'm eager to start signups next week, basically, to issue applications.
Great. So you said April break. Does this go a little bit longer than that?
Nope.
The 16th? Oh, that's only one week. So that's right exactly during the break. So will be no substitutes?
Right, yeah. As long as, I mean, we haven't had any travel issues coming back, though.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's always that possibility, I guess, of a snowstorm.
But no, I definitely intend to keep it to the break, to the vacation.
So you would, really, it would be a matter of approving insurance?
Yep.
Right.
This is a trip that you do every year, you're correct?
Yeah, that's what I've been doing.
This would be the third time?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I've heard nothing but positive about it as one of the, I mean, there's a lot of good trips we have, but that's feedback I've gotten from a few kids on that. It's been fabulous and definitely a learning, a real learning experience, too, not just a tropical John.
Right.
Yeah, my son did that last year and it was, it was a really good trip and a good lead-up to it as well with the readings and writing.
Do you have a history of students that have gone on the trip going into biology in a college setting? Do you know?
It's a good question. Some who have gone into medicine talk to mine quicker than others. I have some students who went last year's juniors. It's mostly been seniors, but some juniors each year and maybe like one sophomore each time. So I could take three in the school right now who want to go on in some sort of tropical conservation ecology work upon graduating. One who wanted to basically just stay down there and start volunteering for the Belize tour, conservation organization.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the April 16th to April 23rd, 2016 tropical ecology trip to Belize. And we, how do you do it? Extend the insurance rider for that period of time.
Second.
Okay, second by Ricky. Any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or extension? Seeing none?
Yes, very much in favor.
Good luck and thank you for your involvement in that. Okay. No other visitors or individuals, so we will move to consent agenda. Is there a motion accordingly? Melanie second. Second by Mike. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are in consent agenda and we will start, as usual, with finance.
Start with the big numbers, eh?
Yeah.
Okay, finance met on February 7th, I believe it was. And maybe it was the 8th. Thursday was the 8th. And we approved warrant numbers 1132, 1133, 1134, 1135, 1137, 1138, 1139, and 1140 for a total of $723,997.53. And then we met on February 26th. And approved warrants 1141, 1143, 1145, 1146, 1147, 1148, 1149, 1150, and 1152 for a total of $408,958.86. Plus, on February 8th, we approved payrolls of January 9th in the amount of $429,829.21. And payroll of January 23rd of $442,334.96. And on February 26th, we approved payrolls of February 6th in the amount of $439,044.74. And payroll of February 20th in the amount of $581,461.66.
Are you sure it's February 8th? February 8th was a Sunday.
It was a Sunday, yeah.
February 8th was Sunday.
I was just looking at my calendar to see what day.
What was the Thursday after?
Could be the 12th, 12th?
No, the 5th.
Yeah, I think we were.
Would've been the 5th, wouldn't it?
Well, normally, we have it the Thursday after the, after the board meeting, but because we had the annual meeting, which was on the 10th.
Well, that's why I'm thinking we met on the 5th anyway.
Yeah, you did.
We did?
I think so. I wasn't there, but I know I couldn't make it. I could make the 6th, but.
Well, we know it wasn't the 8th, but I guess, I guess we'll have to make sure we get that right when we get it in the record because I have the 26th down.
Let me see if I've got anything here that says.
Well, my last, my last paperwork before that shows January 30th, which would have been ahead of, we moved it to Friday. So I know we had it on January 30th. But I don't know, I know all of those are the correct warrants, but it's just a matter of which day they were approved. I guess that's not a huge.
I can't remember what day we met.
Well, we're going to ratify it anyways.
Yeah.
We met on the 26th, definitely.
Yes.
The 26th?
Yep.
No, on what?
The 26th of February.
Yes.
And prior to that, I think it must have been the.
Well, there was a meeting where we did not have a, we did not have a quorum. So.
I think that was in.
Yeah, that, so we actually didn't have a, that was, I think, just.
I think that was January 30th.
Mike and I were there. That was the day that you weren't able to attend.
Yeah.
Sean was away. So there was no official meeting then. So actually, the only official meeting was the 26th. But all these warrants have been ratified by the Finance Committee, as have the payrolls. So as long as the full board goes along with that, we're okay, I believe. And anything more on the 26th meeting?
You could talk about the rest of it.
I could talk about the rest of it, okay. Well, we did, we did take some time to review where we are on year-to-date on the financial statements. And Frank has, I guess I'd call it a little bit of a simplified way of presenting that so we can quickly gauge pretty well where we are as a percentage of where we are, you know, where would you normally be at this point in the year? And are we in the ballpark, all the major departments? And things are looking pretty good from an expense perspective. And of course, with revenue, some of those things are built into when you actually get the revenue and it's erratic through the year, but we're pretty much on track with that. But the important one that I, that I noted was the good expense control. With about a third of the year left to go, we're, we're looking at, maybe not quite exactly a third, but we're looking at a little over 60% expense-wise. So should be in pretty good shape there. And we will continue to review that on a periodic basis as we have in the past. The other interesting bit was that Frank was able to secure interest from suppliers in bidding fixed price for fuel oil for the coming year, which was, I thought it was quite surprising that there was that much interest in committing this early on. And we received three bids and we approved the low bid, which was a really good, really good number to have locked in for next year. And no payment, obviously, until we get to the 1st of July, when we're into the new budget. So I think that's really, really going to help us. And I thank Frank for taking the initiative on that. And really, really, it's really a good, good deal. So we're in good shape there. And then Frank also, at the 26th meeting, reported on the, updated us on the photovoltaic net metering agreement, which is a consortium of schools that's kind of moving forward with good advice and legal assistance to get a net metering agreement. And that was mostly an FYI, filling us in on where, where it stands and is, is moving along. Would not be a photovoltaic setup onsite here. The site is remote, but you benefit, as part of that consortium, we benefit from savings on electricity. And on the Finance Committee, our electrical specialist from Guilford is keeping pretty close tabs on those numbers to make sure it's all not smoke and mirrors, right?
You bet.
So that's about where the Finance Committee is, has been. And our next meeting will be, let's see if we can get that one. It would be the 26th. Nope, we're in March. We didn't schedule a second meeting, I guess.
We did not.
It would normally be the 19th.
March 19th?
Yeah, because we had, the one that we would normally have this Thursday, we had last week because I'm going to be out of town this Thursday. So the next one should be the 19th at 8 o'clock, which is indeed a Thursday. Okay. Why do I not have any other committees? Because nobody has, no other committees have met since the annual meeting. Are there meetings scheduled at this point, committee meetings?
We are in the process of scheduling.
Yes. For teacher curriculum.
Teacher curriculum, BAMS and planning policy.
Will be setting their meetings. Wow, that was fast. Okay, I guess that is it for consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Ricky and Melanie second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, extensions? Not? Consent agenda is approved and we move on to administrative reports. Always the fun part. Let's go backwards this time, okay? You ready to go?
I am. Sure thing, thanks, Ricky. Well, this is, this is the season for us for sending school tours and to show off our Career Center programs. And by the, by the spring and maybe when all the snow melts, we'll have about 450 students that have toured and came through our center, which is pretty exciting. They range from our middle school here in BAMS, our surrounding town middle school students, BUHS high school students and our, of course, our sending schools. So I want to thank all them and their administration for allowing them to tour our facility. I want to also thank Ann Dorn, our guidance counselor. She is spearheading the tours. She does an excellent job of scheduling and participating in this. Also, Paul Cohen has been a instrumental help this year as well. And Betsy Gentilli, she also helps out with, she, with our student ambassador program. And this year, we have over 50 student ambassadors within each of our programs recognized. And they actually lead our tours and talk about our programs as peers and students of the Career Center. So they do an excellent job, so shout out for all those students. Last month, we finally closed on our Ten Wilsons Woods property. And it was on the market for over, I think, a year. So that's very exciting news. Excuse me. I want to give out a few thanks for that. Jim Belleville Realty, excuse me, has, was a very, was very professional throughout the process and helped out along the way and kept us all very optimistic in the selling process. Also, I want to thank the board, Woody and Ruth, and Frank Rucker for helping with the closing process. And Fisher and Fisher Law Firm, the school district's law company for the transaction and the closing process. And we are soliciting interested individuals for our new tiny house construction project that Geometry and Construction and the Construction Trades Program are building. And I want to invite all you board members to the Construction Trades Program and check it out. It's coming along very nicely. The roof is on it. It's insulated, it will be insulated. The wiring has been started and the plumbing will be start, getting started as well. So looking forward to the completion of that project. And we're hoping to find some buyers for the under 500 square foot home.
Given the real estate taxes in Brownsville, would it be possible to buy the house and live in it where it is?
We'll have to ask the board that question.
You have to move it off-site. It's, it's pretty neat if you haven't been over to take a look at it.
Where is it located?
In the Construction Trades Program.
Right, right in the, in the building there.
So it's inside?
Yes.
Which is really nice. I, I went by and there were, it was like an army of ants all, all over, you know, on the, it was a cold winter day and they were in there all working away and it got all, everything's right handy to them. Pretty neat concept.
How long does the process take? How long will the process take to complete it?
Bob Simeon is thinking about a year to a year and a half. It should be complete.
Do you know what price range it will be in?
Hmm, don't quote me on this, Mike.
I won't quote you.
Probably around the $60,000 range or under. We're hoping between 40 and 60.
And it's built for one person, two people?
It's a one-bedroom, one bath, of course.
Is it a twin bed or a?
Probably a bit of full-size space.
The selling, the selling price will include freight to either Putney or Vernon.
Right.
Make it special deal.
Yes.
Keep it on wheels.
I have a spot for it.
Okay, that's it? Thank you. Mr. Perrin?
Sit to the doghouse, nuts. I just keep thinking of it. So a lot of music news to start. It was great to see so many board members at Belize, so thank you for going and supporting the show. It was very well received by people. The cast and crew had a great time doing it. And I think I'm still humming, hopelessly devoted to you. So it was great. The jazz band performed at UMass on Saturday, the 28th. And they spent a whole day working with other jazz bands in the area. And that included clinics, master classes, and a performance by a salsa orchestra in the evening. And Steve Rice reports that was a great event. On Tuesday, the 10th, we'll welcome all district band tonight to the high school. And that's a great celebration of the music that we do as a simplified reunion. And if you've never seen that, it's awe-inspiring to see all ages in there, just showing their passion for music.
What time is that?
6 o'clock. We're proud to have 16 BUHS musicians earn acceptance at the All-State Music Festival. That's three in jazz bands, six in chorus, and seven in the band. That festival will be in Middlebury in May. Steve Rice, Patty Meyer, and Tom Mashaka are keeping busy and doing a great job in keeping us, you know, well-represented. Michelle Hood, Ben Lord, and BAMS teacher Matt Betts have been selected to serve on the Vermont Science Initiative's Next Generation Science Standard Leadership Pathway. What that means is they'll become resources in this area of the state to teachers and other schools rolling out next-gen science standards. It's quite an honor to be selected from across the state and they'll begin doing that work in March. Winter sports, except for Nordic skiing, which will go on as long as there's snow, so that could be a while. Winter sports wrapped up this week and spring sports start in a couple of weeks. The first sign of spring was today when lacrosse sticks started sprouting up all over the hallways. So we know that lacrosse is coming, so that means spring must be near. Our scheduling process for 2015-16 is shifting into high gear. We've distributed all the scheduling materials to students and their families. And we're going to begin the process, we've had middle school visits and then we'll welcome middle schoolers to come see us in a few weeks. But that process is starting. We should have a master schedule for next year placed for late May. We're going to start doing administrative lunches with student council again. We had stopped that for a few years, but student council has asked if we could do that again. That's a great chance for, for myself and the assistant principals and the dean of students to sit down with kids and just kind of, one, have lunch, which is a nice break, and to just kind of sit down and talk to them about issues that they see going on in the school. Right now, we're slated to talk about dress code. No surprise there. We're scheduled to also talk about ACE period and also the course selection process. And kids want to have more input into that process. Finally, it's also the season for hiring. And so I'll be sending you an email probably over the weekend asking you to serve on at least one committee. Right now, we're looking to hire a social studies department chair. We're looking to hire a math instructor, a French teacher, and a part-time 504 coordinator for BUHS number six. I think the department chair in social studies will be the first one we, we move through. And then we'll, we'll work towards the other positions as well. For all of those positions, we've had good to excellent responses. Clearly, social studies and French, we've had a lot more responses than in math. But even in math, we've had some great candidates. And so I'm pretty optimistic about how that process will play out. The department chair for social studies will probably be a two-day process. We have eight or nine candidates right now we want to interview. And that usually is an hour-long interview and then followed by a return to do a sample lesson. The other two positions, we haven't honed down the candidates yet. Two of those positions are still open, so. So stay tuned and, you know, we'll start that process. And we look forward to having the board represented on those committees. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ron is, I believe, down in Vernon tonight, probably, so.
I thought we had a deal.
See what happened when I started the other end? I can't, I can't.
This means I have to be real brave.
My attention span only, only goes to two people. You're after not Ron being here, so.
No.
I'm sorry, my apologies. BAMS.
That's okay. A couple of quick things. We, we've started the transition process. We have quite an extensive transition timeline regarding reaching out to sixth-grade schools and towns that tuition their students, sort of BAMS and other towns, including Vernon. We had a parent night last week over in Vernon and we met with probably eight to 10 families. Just tried to get that process started, especially families that might be considering different options. Just talking to them about BAMS and answering questions and those kind of things. So was happy to be part of that. We, we recently had, we're almost at the midterm point in quarter three, but we did have an honor roll party recently for kids who made honor roll. That's a, it's a nice, what I like about it is we solicit local businesses and they donate like gift cards and those kind of things to kids. And we, we give out a bunch of, a bunch of stuff and ice cream and stuff. So it's, it's a fun way to celebrate kids making honor roll. We, we're certainly moving closer to the S-back testing. Now we're starting to really get into the nitty-gritty. We met as a leadership team last Friday and learned more about what it's going to take to do the tests. And it's indirectly related today. We had NAP testing for the eighth grade. Ms. Curry did a really fabulous job organizing that because I sure as heck didn't want to do it.
She, what test?
NAP is National.
OANAP.
Yeah, sorry, National Assessment. It's the federal test that we randomly get selected for. And, but it was, it, it went off smoothly, as far as I could tell. And there's a lot of kind of setup to get that ready. And Jerry really did a fabulous job. As Michael had, had noted, we sent our eighth grade over to Career, to tour the Career Center. Was it the week before break? Yes. I guess it was. Yeah, and we were really appreciative to have that opportunity and heard good things. The Career Center really does a nice job showing off their facility and programming, so happy about that. One other thing that I wanted to kind of just let you know that's happening. We have this program called the PEAK Program, which is sort of an alternative kind of program within our. which is sort of an alternative kind of program within our school. There's a small group of kids, probably eight to 10, that are in that program. And it's not necessarily special ed students, although there are some special ed students. But a lot of them are in there, just kinda need some type of alternative programming. And they split their day between the PEAK Program and regular classes. And this year, because we have a new teacher and we're trying to kinda develop it, we started... We formed a relationship with Mount Snow. We're sending them up, those kids, up once a week up to Mount Snow. And it's really about showing them some of the local careers and business opportunities, showing them what it's like to be part of that kind of... Because we are in this seasonal tourism industry around here. A lot of people end up working there, having relatives that work there. So they go up, they got to ride, like, the cat up to the top of the mountain and see what that was all about. And one of our students, some of them got to meet, like, some of the really top executives of Mount Snow, and they just thought it was the coolest thing. So we kinda have this... They're learning a little bit about the careers that are in that industry, but also they do get to do some skiing and boarding. And a lot of these students just wouldn't have that opportunity ever if we didn't provide it. So Mount Snow's been incredibly gracious. Gracious. Incredibly giving in providing us this opportunity. And so I just wanted to let you know, in case you hadn't... I don't think I've reported on it before, but so far, it's been going great. Kids love it. I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. As far as board chair, just a couple of things to note. One is that if you've been following the workings of the legislature, there's a huge amount of activity around school education, taxes, reform, the word that I'm told I'm not supposed to use anymore, which is consolidation, reorganization. And I... At this point, they're throwing everything against the wall to see what sticks. And I just encourage everybody to kinda keep, you know, keep an eye on what's going on. I believe everybody... I get quite a bit from the ESBA. I assume everybody gets that. It's just a huge amount of ideas and thoughts and concepts being advanced. And the ESBA, of course, is watching that pretty closely. But it's really... There're gonna be some changes as the way we do things over the next few years. It's important to keep ourselves educated as to what's happening. The other is just to comment, a personal observation regarding the number of snowstorms and cold and ice and all that. And I've been over here several times, and I've been amazed at just how well the snow and ice have been taken care of, how quickly in the... You know, the night we were here for Greece, there was snow. It was snowing pretty hard when we came out, and already there was salt where there needed to be. I understood even the principal had been out cleaning snow. But it's important, you know, that we provide a safe environment. And in addition to, you know, the contractor doing a good job, the staff has too. And it's really nice to know you can come over here in any kind of weather and get around, because that wasn't true in all parts of town. So that's all I have. That's it for administrative reports. Is there any unfinished business? Okay, new business? We've already taken care of the Belize trip. Anything else for new business? I would just ask... We typically, we would now get back into our habit of having a board education session on the second meeting of the month. And I know there were a couple of things we talked about. Is there anything yet that's ready for... I'll put you on the spot. I know it's only two weeks away.
We have something to do with the new science program.
The next-generation science, yeah. Can you let me know within a few days, and we'll put it on the agenda? Now that the big meeting is over, we can start to go back to focus on the stuff we should be focusing on. But there was good reason why we were working on the budget. Okay, is there anything else for the good of the order?
Mr. Chairman?
So Ruth, who will be going to town meeting, and some of the rest of you tomorrow going to your town meetings, good luck. Thanks for participating. And those of you that are running for reelection, good luck. Thanks for participating.
I might just say, I'm probably not gonna be going back anymore. So I don't know if Putney is for another candidate or not. I'm not sure about it, it's like, yeah. But I'm not running again. My term is up. So it's lovely working with you.
Well, we appreciate your involvement. It's, you know, it's a mark, I think, when anybody steps up to the plate to take that responsibility. We wish you the best. At least you're taking a sabbatical, right?
That's right. We're gonna put it at that point.
Second motion, by the way.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we got off track.
This is the Career Center.
Oh, Career Center?
Career Center.
Okay, second motion. Is there any other questions or comments about returning? If not, all in favor? Abstained, opposed? Thank you.